Okay, good evening everybody and welcome to the Hutchinson County Podcast. Today is March the twentieth, twenty twenty-five. My guest today is Autumn Watley, candidate for PSP C I S D School Board. Autumn, welcome to the Hutchinson County Podcast.
Thank you for having me.
All right, Autumn, we'll start with some questions you got ahead of time along with all my other guests that have been on the podcast. So we'll start with, can you share your background and experience, particularly any that would contribute to your role on the school board?
Sure, um, so my background is in education. I have spent the last twelve years as an educator. Um, I have a doctorate degree in educational leadership. So I know a little bit about educational administration. Actually, I conducted my research for my dissertation here in our school district. Mrs. Copley was so gracious to allow me to do that. So, uh, I think that all of those things, all of those things, uh, contribute to my, whatever you said, um, my role on the school board.
Yeah, sorry about that, we had a little kind of technical issues trying to line her up here on this, uh, camera and everything. All right, we'll go with question number two. What motivated you to run for a school board position on the PSP C I S D School Board?
Well, I am a graduate of West Texas High School. Um, my husband is a graduate, we're Comanches. My, I have two kids in the school system as well, so I'm raising little Comanches. We live here in this town, so I have a vested interest in wanting to see our school system be successful. Whenever our school system is successful, our community can be successful. I live here and, um, I think that that's motivation enough.
Yes, and you're the first candidate that is running for school board that is not on the school board. So just let folks know that she would appreciate your vote.
Yes, absolutely.
So we'll go to the next question. How do you think your personal and professional experiences will help guide your decisions on the board?
Well, as a teacher myself, uh, I think that I would able to, I would be able to see things through a different lens. Uh, the decisions that come to the school board are often very complex. And I've myself have sat in the classrooms, I've graded the papers. I have, um, I've worked with the students, I've talked to the parents and, and community members. I've worked with administrators, I've done all of those things. And so when the difficult decisions are needed to be made, I think that I can view those things through a teacher's lens, which I think brings something different to the table.
Okay, our next subject will be vision and goals. What are your top priorities for the PSP C I S D School District over the next few years?
Top priorities, um, I would have to say I have four of them, uh, as far as priorities go. Um, number one, I would say support. I think that, um, it is the, the responsibility of the school board to provide support for teachers, for students, for, um, staff, for administrators, for the community. School board members are meant to be that bridge between the school district and the community. And I would like to be an open ear to be able to help facilitate that bridge and create a culture of support and communication. Another goal I think would be to work on, um, improving transparency. Uh, sometimes decisions that are made, um, at the school district are often a mystery. And I think that improving transparency is always important and we can always improve on those things. Uh, another thing would be accountability, uh, which I think goes hand in hand with fiscal responsibility. A couple of years ago, I was invited by, I, I'm not sure if it was one of the principals or Mrs. Copley, but I was invited to be, to serve on the committee for our, um, strategic planning process. So our school district has a strategic plan in place. And, uh, we had, there are certain checkpoints and certain goals that the strategic plan has laid out for our school district concerning both accountability in several different areas with, uh, education, uh, funding, um, culture, things like that. And so I think that maintaining that accountability with regards to education and fiscal responsibility should both be priorities um, of the school district.
Okay, we'll go with the next question. What do you believe are the most important issues facing the district right now and how would you address them?
Um, I think that I think for so long, first of all, I want to say that our school district is going in an amazing direction. Mrs. Copley, along with our administrators and our school board, has been working very hard for the last several years, the last couple of years, to get our school district going in a positive direction. And they have been doing a wonderful job and I think that that's being communicated very well to our community. Uh, while we still have progress to go, I think we are certainly headed in the right direction. One of the topics of conversation though, that we've been talking about over the last couple of years, the, the main thing, I guess, that people discuss would be school funding. And that's important, um, because obviously we can't, we can't do our jobs here if the school, um, isn't managing their money properly, right? So now that we have that under control, one thing that concerns me is that there is not enough conversation about, um, about educational performance, about academics. We know that there is a national, a statewide, a nation, a nationwide teacher shortage. Uh, we have academics, uh, across the state, across the nation as well, uh, are at an all-time low. And so every school all around is struggling with low academics. So it's, it's really easy to just make that comparison and say, well, our academics are lower, so is everyone else's. But for some reason, we don't talk about that very often and I would like very much to see that become more part of the conversation. Our school district at one time was the gold standard of our area. That is no longer the case. And while many schools across the nation, across the state, across the region are experiencing a lot of these issues, um, teacher shortages, a lack of highly qualified teachers, uh, low academic, uh, uh, performance, all of these kinds of things. There are still some in our area that despite those odds are still performing well. What are they doing? What's their secret? I don't know. I don't, I don't know what their secret is, but I would like to find out. And I think that that's a conversation that needs to be had and I would very much like to be in the room to bring it up and, and, and listen and, and find out what I can about it and see if there's anything that can be done.
All right, that sounds pretty good. We'll go with the next one. How do you envision the role of the school board in supporting students, teachers, and staff?
Um, when it, when it comes to, when it comes to support, as I mentioned before, the role of the school board is meant to be a bridge between the community and the school district. And so while I think there's a little bit of, um, misunderstanding about what the actual role of the school board is, I'm, I'm not a, um, this, this is my first experience doing this, so I have a lot to learn, hopefully, um, I have a lot to learn. But I do imagine that part of being a successful school board would be to create, uh, to establish a culture where teachers, um, students even, administrators, community members feel comfortable coming and talking to school board members about their issues, even about their successes, about their goals, about their ambitions, about their struggles, whatever it is. And the school board members are there to support them in whatever it is. Um, oftentimes, the teachers, the administrators, they have the best ideas. You know, school board members have to make decisions regarding the school district, but the teachers are on the front lines. The administrators are on the front lines. The students are the ones that sit in the desks. They are the ones that have the ideas. The parents are the ones that are sitting at home listening to the stories about what's happening at school every single day. They're the ones that have the ideas. School board members need to be open to that. The culture needs to be established where that open communication can happen. And I believe that school board members need to be supportive of that.
Well, the next subject we're gonna jump into is collaboration and leadership. How do you plan to work with fellow board members, school administrators, and the community to achieve the district's goals?
Well, um, I believe that everybody brings something different to the table. Uh, all school board members have different backgrounds, different experiences, uh, different strengths. For example, I'm an educator, I see things through an educator's lens. We have school board members who are business owners, some who are successful business owners of multiple businesses. We have some school board members who maybe, um, they have insider knowledge on school safety and how best to approach that. We have school board members who are administrators and great leaders within their organizations. All of these different strengths come together to one table and together make decisions that, um, to make decisions in order to provide the best quality of education for our students here at PSP. I think that it's really important that everybody understands, that everybody comes together with, um, with their own strengths, not to, not to sound like a broken record here, but, um, i- it's a collaborative process, if that makes sense. Um, we're, as far as working with, um, administrators in the community, I'm a teacher. Uh, I have, I have no, I have no issues. I've been working with administrators, community members, teachers, parents, students, um, every day. That's, that's what I do every day, so.
I think you've kind of answered number eight, we'll read it out here. What is your approach to leadership and how do you plan to foster a positive and collaborative environment on the school board?
Yeah, same thing. Uh, I, I think it's important to work together, uh, you know, just, just understanding that everybody brings their own different perspective and, uh, coming to the table and making decisions based off of, um, that collaborative process.
Okay, our next question. How do you plan to communicate effectively with parents, teachers, and other stakeholders in the district?
Um, one thing that I think anybody from any industry at any organization would probably tell you that they could improve on would be communication. Uh, I think we have seen within the last couple of years, we have seen improvements within our district. As far as communication goes, uh, for example, when the bond election came, uh, and they, they proposed the bond election, they did a really good job of what is this for, um, providing information to the public, this is what you're voting on. And then after the public approved the bond, uh, then the school district did a great job of taking pictures. This is where your money is going and the community seemed to respond to that really well. So I do think that the, the school district has taken steps, uh, in the direction of improved communication. But like I said, I think that there's always room for improvement. One thing that I have noticed, because I live in this community as well, anytime that there's chatter of, you know, something, you know, someone's disagreed with, with something that's happened at the school. It's always, it always comes down to, well, you need to go to a school board meeting. Okay, well, you know, parents have nine hundred things going on in their lives. You know, every week, I'm, I'm a mom too, I understand. You know, we, we have practices, we have lessons, we have church, we have to make dinner, we have to somehow fit homework in. And maybe we don't have time for that. Well, if that's true, well then get on the school website and look at the agenda and look at the minutes. Look at the, the links that are posted on there. Well, have you ever tried to get on there and look at that stuff before? Have you ever clicked on the links that might take you to the T, the T E A website, the Texas Education, Education Agency website? Have you looked at the data in that way? Um, it's not very easy to read. Uh, if for an experienced educator like myself, sometimes it's hard for me to filter through it. And so I think it's really unfair for our community members to get the reputation that maybe they're not invested in our school district and the decisions that are being made. You know, it's like that mom guilt thing, or whatever it is that people are calling it these days. They care, they, they really do. But the way that we used to reach people, the way that we used to communicate with people, is not the way that we communicate with people today. Right? We, everybody has, it, the, the world is so fast-paced. We can't keep up with that. And I think that we could do better. I think that we could definitely, um, find other ways to maybe transfer information in a way that, that people can understand, maybe condense it down and put things out there that, that would be easier for community members to understand. So that way, parents and maybe even teachers and administrators or students or whomever could easily, more easily consume that information and become more invested in what the school district is doing. So I think that steps should be made in that direction. For example, maybe a newsletter, a, a, a monthly school board newsletter or something like that. I, I actually create the newsletter for the middle school every single week, maybe something like that. If that becomes outdated, because as we know, technology, uh, becomes outdated.
It don't take long.
Right, it doesn't take long. But, but maybe the, the next latest and greatest thing comes out and we can figure out what's gonna reach people the best the next week. But I, I think that steps need to be taken to reach people in different ways, because right now we're not providing the best way to allow people to be invested in a way that we know that they want to.
It's gotta be user-friendly, everybody don't have the same computer skills and technology. It's, it changes a lot, it's been a challenge
Exactly.
for people in my age group to keep up with, go look at this, go in and sign up and make a account and a password. Then your password won't take, then you're locked out, I totally understand. Something more user-friendly would go a long way and kind of ma- connect that bridge between the school board and the community.
I think so too.
So, we'll go to our next subject here, accountability and decision-making. How will you ensure that the school district is held accountable for student performance, budget management, and overall effectiveness?
Well, um, like I said earlier, our school district has a strategic plan in place. Uh, I was part of the early stages of that planning committee, but Mrs. Copley has it rolling, it's in the works right now. And the way that that works is there are several different categories, uh, that, that cover all of these things that are listed here. Accountability, student performance, budget, budget management, overall effectiveness in all areas of the school district. And the way that that works there are different checkpoints over time. And once, once it comes time for a checkpoint, the school district, it's time to assess that checkpoint. How are we doing in this area? If we are doing well, then there is a procedure to go forward. If we're not doing well, there's a procedure to stop, rea- uh, you know, adjust, what do we need to do to fix it and get back on track? And so I think that the school board, I believe the school board's role is to work with the superintendent and we'll have a new superintendent pretty soon, hopefully, um, that we can work together or the school board will work together with to ensure that what Mrs. Copley has started with this str- strategic planning process is carried out and our school district continues in the direction of accountability and maintaining that accountability to make sure that our school district continues in the direction of success that it's already been on.
Okay, the next question, we talked about this before we came on. Can you describe a time when you had to make a tough decision? How did you approach it and what was the outcome? Now, it could be personal, like your decision to buy this land and build this house or something like that. There, just example, just tough decision now. Couple of other people we talked about, decision to get married and everything. You can use that as an example, whatever, it's just a personal question on this one.
Um, so okay, so a, a couple of years, all right, let me think, how many years ago? Um, this is a personal one, but I'll, I'll, I'll tell you. Um, I see, it would be eight years ago, I made the decision to, um, aspire to want to teach at the college level. Uh, before that, I had only been teaching at the high school level. And I had just finished my master's degree and I, I was like, I think one day I want to teach at the college level. After that, after making that decision, I taught three more years at the high school level. And then the opportunity presented itself for me to be able to teach college. And it was a very scary opportunity for me. And it came time, it, it, it was very real, because anybody that knows me knows that I love teaching. I love being a teacher more than anything. And moving up to the college level was going to be a completely different experience. When you teach high school, you get to, you know, you, you get to see them grow from freshmen all the way to seniors. You get to watch them, you know, in their academic, their, um, their athletic successes. For me, I got to work with them as an academic coach, I got to work with them in the theater program, I got to do all kinds of things with them. As a college professor, that's not the case. And so I had to make this decision. I did decide to go ahead and do it, obviously. Um, I've been teaching at the college now for five years. Of course, whenever I did it, I, I did ask my principal to make sure that he kept a job for me and he said he would. In case I wanted to come back, uh, which was, which was really nice of him to do. But nevertheless, I, I did decide to move up to the college level. And since then, I now teach, I teach probably anywhere from five to six times more students per year than I did before. I don't get to know them nearly as much as I did before, uh, just because I, I'm not with them every single day. I teach them English for one semester and then they move on. But what I, uh, you know, what I've learned is I get all kinds of different experiences that go along with that. I teach on eight different campuses. I get to work with different administrators, different teachers, and a range, a diverse range of students every single day. And so my impact as a teacher is so much more. And at the end of the day, while there are some things that I miss about being a traditional high school teacher, at the end of the day, the impact that I make now is much greater and that's more important than anything else. And I'm pretty sure that if you were to ask any teacher why they do what they do, the word impact is gonna be in there somewhere.
Okay, we'll go on to the next question. I mean, that's all impressive, uh, I would think, being a college teacher, you just maybe there for a paycheck, you just, the students are paying to take the class, they show up, they do, they don't. They don't show up, high school kid, you're gonna have to wor- you worry about is he or she having problems at home, but uh, that's interesting breakdown of how you talked about the difference between the high school and the college level and.
Well, one thing about being here, you know, we live in, in the greatest place. It's still small town. Um, we're, we're still a small-town college where I am, we teach small-town people. And so that mindset hasn't changed. And so, you know, you think about a traditional college professor, all of those stereotypes that you have, you get from the movies. It's not like that here.
That was my semester at Frank's, what I was referencing, but I just, like I said, back then, you either keep up or you just, you're just in trouble.
My class, maybe you need to enroll.
Probably elementary school when I was in college in nineteen ninety-two. And my point six seven grade point average, but anyway, we'll, one of that, this is about you tonight.
Okay.
All right. What steps do you think the school district should take to ensure that all students have equal access and opportunities and resources? Now, this was a question with Dateline and Mr. Wambel up there in Spearman, that it's basically a small school. If you want to do something, there's actually a place for you, either in athletics, academics, or whatever, but maybe you have a different take on that, but that's just what kind of we come up with, that everybody has an opportunity. It's a small school, if you were in a four or five A school, that'd be a different story.
Yeah, um, you know, a lot of times when you think about equity and inclusion, uh, you think about ethnic background. That's the first thing that comes to mind. But in the education world, there are several populations of people, or in, we call them pops, in the special pops in, or gen pop, in the education world. It can also be, um, socioeconomic backgrounds as well. It can also be students with different learning disabilities and needs. So it's not just limited to, you know, what, what kind of cultural background, ethnic background that you have. Um, so, but at, you know, in the same vein of what you were saying, as far as taking the steps to make sure that every student, regardless of their, uh, diversity, regardless of their socioeconomic background, regardless of their, um, maybe their, their learning needs. Uh, I believe that our school district is taking the steps and will continue to take the steps to make sure that those students have what they need. Like I said before, nobody talks about the fact that we live in the best place in the world. Um, for just example, we had a fire the other day. We had a fire last year. And when something tragic like that happens around here, our community comes together to make sure everybody has what they need. The same is true within the school district. If, if there is a need in the school, it will be taken care of, whether it's a child that has a learning need, if it's a child that has a financial need, if, regardless of what that is, that need is going to be taken care of. Um, and I, I just know this, um, about our, about our school system and I know that uh, our, our school district, as well as our school board members, will ensure that regardless of their need and their background, uh, it, it will be taken care of.
All right, next question. How would you address any disparities in education, achievement, or resources within the district?
Um, as far as disparities go, I think that the word, you know, it's in the equity and inclusion category here that you have. So I think that what I said before kind of covers that, yeah. But I think disparities is kind of a, um, you could, um, you could really kind of describe that however you want. Uh, i- if you could see, say, see something as a disparity and I might not see it as a disparity, you know what I mean?
Yes. How do you plan to ensure the voices of diverse Yes. How do you plan to ensure the voices of diverse communities within the district are heard and valued?
Um, I think that every voice should be heard and valued. Uh, all communities, uh, like I said about, um. Being that bridge between the uh, school district and the community as far as the school board goes. I, I think that all voices need to be heard, no matter what, what population you come from.
Okay, our next subject is financial stewardship. How do you view the role of the school board in managing the district's budget and ensuring financial resources? Are used effectively?
Uh, I think that the, I, I'm sure that part of the, like I said, I have a lot to learn. But part of the strategic plan includes, um. Fiscal responsibility and uh, the, the school board is responsible for also. Setting and maintaining a budget. Uh, I believe that the. Uh, the school board, along with the superintendent, is responsible for, uh, the administrators as well. Responsible for, um. Making sure that all financial resources are needed. Uh, and that the school board approves those as they, they come across. And so I think. Part of the process is making sure that we're not spending money on things that we don't need. But at the same time, that we are ensuring that our students and our teachers. Uh, in our schools are getting what they need and we're, we're, we're finding that balance.
Alright, the next one, we talked about this before we came on, your opinion on school vouchers?
Uh, my opinion on school vouchers, um. It's going to happen whether we like it or not, just like all changes. And well, it may happen whether we like it or not, we, at this point, we, we don't have a lot of control. Um, we, we control things with our votes, so call your congressman. Like all things within education, the, the people that control the, the, the major moving parts. Are not the people on the ground doing the hard work, unfortunately. And the people that make the biggest decisions. Don't truly understand the impacts that they make. And. Teachers and school districts have to learn as, as I learned very early on. In my educational career, we had, and I learned the term bob and weave. We had to learn how to bob and weave. This is something, whether we like it or not, this is something that we already know how to do. Uh, the state throws things at us all the time. They update the teaks and we have to adjust our. The teaks are the standards by which teachers have to teach. It's basically what we are teaching in the classroom. And at the drop, the, the hat, the state could just change that. And so what you have planned to teach next year, well, now you have to do something different. Um. They can change our uh, state testing. For example. You know, a couple of years ago, they decided to change, to totally wipe and change the state testing. And so they sent out a pilot program and, or a pilot testing, they send that out. They don't even tell you how they're going to grade it until after the students take the exam. Okay, these are the kind of people that we're dealing with here. And so like everything else, regardless of. What, uh, what the outcome is as far as this voucher thing goes. Uh, school districts are resilient, teachers are resilient, students are resilient. And our school district, as we know, is resilient. And we have some amazing people here and whatever that comes our way, we will, we'll deal with it. And make the best of it because that's what we do, that's what we're here for.
I know the school district at one time, when we consolidated in nineteen eighty-seven. We got the tax money from the refineries and Phillips's tax money and. Went from being one of the poorest school districts in the state to the richest overnight. And we feared for years, they had that Robin Hood program out there and the school fought it for years, for years. Finally, they come to fruition, what about seven, eight years ago? And the school had to really button it up cause you remember the gory days and. Everything else, it pretty much lived high on the hog for years. So it does change, I give you that, it's just how you adjust is how you're gonna be successful. So we'll go to the next question, what makes you the best candidate for this position and what unique qualities would you bring to the board?
Um, as far as being unique, uh, I think that my education background. Uh, and my, my experience as an educator. I think all of those things are unique qualities. I think it allows me to see. Things through a different lens and I can bring some different ideas to the table. Uh, personally, anybody that knows me knows that I'm not afraid to state my opinion. I'm definitely not a yes man kinda girl. Um, I. I'm not, I'm not afraid to, to say something whenever, whenever I feel like I need to. But at the same time, when discussions are, you know, open, I really do value. Others' opinions as well. I think that that's really important. And I'm not, I'm definitely not afraid to be open to other ideas and have those discussions and come to agreements and. At the end of the day, make decisions on, for the best interest of the students. Because a- after all, that's what we're here for. I think all of those qualities together make me a good candidate.
How do you plan to stay informed about the issues impacting the district and the community you serve?
Well, um.
Open your email probably would be a good start.
Yeah, I, I live in the education world, so as far as the, the politics of it, I live in this world. So, uh, I'm, I'm always super informed on that. I'm also very involved in our school district. I am constantly, I mean, they, they know me, uh, on campus. So well that they, they ask me, okay, what hat are you wearing today? I teach up there, I volunteer up there, I am at, in our district, in our buildings constantly. Doing different things and so I, I talk to people and I listen to them. And I, I, I think that all of that allows me to stay informed.
Okay, this is an interesting question. It's maybe bragging yourself kinda deal would be. What would you want your legacy on the PSPC ISD school board to be after your tenure?
I don't feel like I need a legacy, um.
Now, we was talking about with the other candidates, uh. Approve something that they build and then you got your name on the plaque there on the building. And I would get, that's what I was talking to Toby about. He was there long enough, his name's on the new facilities up there and stuff and. It is kind of a, kind of a weird question and it just maybe at the end of the day. You put a hundred and ten percent into the school board and you gave it, gave it your all and made the best decisions that were. Presented to you.
I really have no interest in any kind of legacy or putting my name on a. On a plaque or having, you know, building up my resume or anything like that, um.
I think it's got more of me and your husband's kinda deal. It's kind of a guy thing. We want that whole stuff, but not speaking for him and everything though.
If later on, um, people, you know, several years from now, if. If someone were to look back and say, you know what, those years from two thousand twenty-five to however long I might serve. If they say, I think the school board did a good job from those years, that I think would be legacy enough for me.
Okay, anything else you wanna tell your voters that?
Um, I don't think so. Uh, hopefully this gives them plenty to consider.
And actually get to know who you are.
Vote for me.
Vote for me, but go out, go out and vote.
Yeah, please vote, please.
Please vote anything and Autumn would really appreciate your vote. Well, Autumn, I appreciate you and your husband welcoming me to your home and everything. It's very, very nice. The last one knows that was very nice too. Just don't ask him about the windmill and he'll be fine on that one. And so, okay, well, that's a wrap on this week's episode. Be sure to check out the Hutchinson County Podcast. On Facebook and YouTube and on the High Plains Observer Facebook page and highplainsobserver.com. Someone for myself and Autumn, we are outta here.